Board of Selectmen Meeting, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty P. M. In Selectmen Meeting Room Number One. If we could all stand. Plaid to please.
Life allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this doesn't look like a really expansive meeting notice, but um I would see approval is needed for the Minister of Regular Meeting, April eleventh?
So moved, estimated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed? Community relations.
I will take Josh's place tonight. Announcements for Board of Selectmen's meeting for April twenty five, twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three. The town election is Saturday, May sixth, twenty twenty-three, eight A. M. to eight P. M. At the Heritage School. The annual town meeting will be Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven P. M. At the Charlton Mill School. Absentee ballots are now available. Contact the Town Clerk's office for details or see Town Clerk's page on the website. Charlton Earth Day cleanup is Saturday, April twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three, roadside trash pickup, eight A. M. to two P. M. From eight A. M. On the Common Road, on the Common Road volunteers may pick up yellow bags, gloves, safety vests, boxes of water, and a packet of native wildflower seeds. Edible wild plants and mushrooms in and around Charlton, Thursday, April twenty seventh, six to eight P. M. In Dexter Hall. Charlton and surrounding communities are home to over one hundred species of edible wild plants. Many of these species are more nutritious and/or flavorful than their cultivated counterparts. The region is also home to dozens of species of edible mushrooms. Join Russ Cohen, wild edibles enthusiast and author of the book Wild Plants I Have Known, Andy In, for a ninety-minute slideshow covering at least three dozen of the tastiest species the region has to offer. Keys to identification of each species will be provided along with info on edible plants, seasons of availability, and preparation methods. Guidelines for safe and environmentally responsible foraging will also be covered. Russ will accompany his talk with handouts and several foraged goodies made with wild ingredients. Registration is requested. Yard waste drop-off at the D. P. W. At one hundred Flint Road, April twenty-second and the twenty-ninth, and May sixth and thirteenth, ten A. M. to two P. M. Bush, brush and branches, grass clippings, leaves, open to Charlton residents only, no containers, bags to be left on-site. Visit W. 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 dot town of Charlton dot net for more information. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Paty, for that. And moving on to appointments and.
Anybody here for?
Oh, oh, is there anyone here for open forum? I'm hearing none, seeing none, no hands, okay. Thanks, Andrew. So, and so we're moving on to appointments and, and/or resignations.
All right. What appointment for tonight? Appointment for special police officers and traffic constables. Chief Dowd is asking the board to appoint the following special police officers pending a background completion. Jonathan Swift, James O'Neil, Corey Jiguer, Gladys Matos, or Anne Gladys Matos. You are being asked to appoint John Jacob, Jacoblowski as traffic constable. I would recommend the board make the appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Unanimous.
All right. And we have one resignation from the Conservation Commission. Attaches a letter from Arthur Skip Belreiv resigning his position from the Conservation Commission after serving for thirty years on that commission. Mr. Belreiv has served the town for the past sixty years in different positions. Besides the Conservation Commission, he has served on the Board of Health, dam monitor, Assistant Building Commissioner, and the Fay Mountain Farm Committee. He's also joined as a volunteer fire department member in nineteen sixty-one and served for twenty years. Like to thank Mr. Belreiv for his service to the town and a letter thanking him for his sixty years of dedicated services in your signed folder.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman? Yeah, just, just briefly, I mean, anytime someone's served thirty years on a board and sixty years in the town, this is one of those things where we all, like, like a huge, you know, just debt of thanks more than anything. And I think this would be a prime example of, you know how we have a lot of different honorees for Old Home Day? I mean, I think Skip has to fit one of these categories once we get to that, so just kind of planting that seed for the future, so. Motion with deep regret, and Skip, I hope you enjoy your official full retirement.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Any further discussion or no? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
We'll have to be just to skip, see if he wants to be like a parade marshal or something.
He was a volunteer firefighter in nineteen sixty-one. God bless you.
Just one, just one item under new business, a request for B. Y. O. B. For G. G. L. Inc. D. B. A. Bellies. Attaches a request from G. G. L. Inc. D. B. A. Bellies located at one oh nine Masonic Home Road, Unit Two, for a B. Y. O. B. Permit. The board has a policy for B. Y. O. B. Which is limited to Thursday, Fridays, and Saturday evenings between the hours of five and ten P. M. I recommend the board approve the request.
Yeah, so moved, I've no issue with this all.
I second the motion.
Is, is anybody here from, from Bellies?
I am.
Hi.
I'm Lori Hayes.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing great.
Good, are you, um, my only question was, are you, if I'm looking at the bylaws, you're, are you gonna change your hours or?
We are, we are. We're actually looking to expand our hours and do some more hours. We seem to have a huge community response, and, and people, people love us around here.
Yeah.
So we want to expand our hours and to get some more evening hours in. We already do a burger bomb from five to ten on Thursdays where we reduce prices of our burgers to ten dollars, and that's a huge response in this community. And we were wanting to also add Friday nights, and we want to probably separate between us, a little like a dine-in date kind of thing, and we're hoping to be able to bring that to town and give people something to do around here.
That's awesome. That was my only question because according to the bylaws, it would only affect you on Thursday nights if, because you're from five to ten.
Currently until we expand our hours.
Okay. All right, wow.
Mr. Chairman, just one question. So if approved, obviously, when would this go into effect?
It should be in effect immediately after your vote.
Okay, so if it's in effect immediately, which means technically as soon as you do your hours, it could even be Thursday, are your staff already tip-certified?
Yes, sir.
So they're all set.
I actually have been working with her, and I have everybody that would be, every employee is tip-certified, and I have all those documents, and I'll be handing them off to her.
Thank you.
Good point there. Okay, so we have a, a motion, a second, discussion, all in favor? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Oh, aye, yeah, absolutely.
Aye.
Good luck, Laurie.
Chair says aye.
Keep those chicken and waffles coming.
Yep, yep. See you guys on Friday night. And we are moving on to old business, which is actually, shouldn't call it old business, we're here in front of FinCon, right? Motions Finance Committee.
Yep, so both boards, I'm not sure if you guys need to open up your meeting, but.
We did.
Okay, very good. Would be to take motions to recommend each article for town meeting warrant, so. And then I'll need approval from the Board of Selectmen also to post the one.
Mr. Chairman, to make our lives a little easier.
I'm all for that.
I'm gonna make a motion that the board support articles one through five, at least from, from a Board of Selectmen's view, because, I'm sorry, one through six, just as one clump to make our lives a little easier, because these are all housekeeping items.
Second.
Sorry. Any discussion on that, or we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Unanimous.
So Hank, I think you guys have what, three and, oh, two, four, and five, I think? Or six?
Does, does everybody understand the motion that the Board of Selectmen just passed? Right? We're gonna unanimously approve, okay? So I'll entertain a motion that we support articles one through six.
Articles one through six.
Have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All say no. Unanimous on our side.
Cool, thanks, Hank. Mr. Chairman, Article seven, for those at home in the viewing audience, is the Shepherd Hill feasibility study. I know, Andrew, is this the final language that we're gonna use?
This is, yes, this is the final language that's been approved through the school's bond council and reviewed by M. S. B. A.
I'm a huge believer in this, that we should fund this, and again, we're funding this partially through ARPA and some other ways, so we're trying to minimize the tax as best we can. So I'd, I'll make a motion to, to endorse, or you know, however you wanna think about it, the M. S. B. A. Feasibility Study, to support the motion.
I second the motion.
And open for discussion, I have one question, the, the, how do town meeting voters know what, how much is funded through ARPA and how much is?
So it's actually kind of spread as two different votes per se. So the first one is the authorization for the feasibility site to be assessed the cost. The second portion of that is actually implemented as part of the town budget. So as you see reading through, under the next article, Article eight, it lists out as two hundred and thirty-seven thousand being funded from the American Rescue Plan and three hundred thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of the Shepherd Hill feasibility study. So that's actually two, part of two different motions that will go into our funding this, that request.
So from free cash, not a, not a borrowing?
Correct, yes.
Question if I may, just for everyone watching, is there any requirement from Dudley's side for this?
Yes, Dudley has to pass the same, their equivalent.
So then what happens to Charlton's if Charlton, just so everyone watching, if Charlton passes this but Dudley fails it?
It would, zero.
It would sit in the operational budget unexpended.
Until what, fall town meeting, and then we move it over?
And actually, we can't expend it because ARPA, in, in the motion, it specifically says ARPA, so because it's specific, even though town meeting doesn't really have a say over ARPA, we can't, you can't spend that money, it would just stay in ARPA. And then the free cash would have to get incorporated somewhere else, it would just get closed.
And then the deadline to post where we plan to spend the remaining ARPA money?
The remaining ARPA money really isn't until the end of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, well.
Oh, no, we have a while.
I think we have to have it allocated by what, the end of FY twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah, you have to identify to the federal government where it's spent.
Plenty of time.
Yeah, well, end of twenty-four, we're almost, we're probably, but okay, very good, all Moving on.
Did you just vote on Article seven?
No, we have to, maybe a motion too.
Yep.
No, we have a, we have a motion second, it's, we have to vote.
You haven't actually voted yet. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Do we know opposition?
From my side, I will entertain a motion that the Finance Committee support Article seven as written.
So moved.
Motion going second. Second over here, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All say no. Unanimous.
So, Mr. Chairman, town budget, ARPA, our favorite, and again, I want to commend the Finance Committee and all the partners for, you know, all the work you guys did on this as well. To me, this is as tight of a budget as we could bring in, and I think we compromised fairly with the school committee, so thanks to them as well. I mean, who knows what happens on town meeting floor? I mean, Hank and I both have strong feelings about what could happen on town meeting floor. But that being said, I think this is a very austere budget. I think it takes care of the taxpayer, it takes care of the town, it takes care of the school, and I would make a motion to support the proposed town budget as is.
I second the motion.
Open for discussion, we have a motion and a second.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? I've been over the wrong part of your discussion.
Oh, no, of course.
Okay.
Hey, hey, you're part of the family, man.
No, I, I, I thought you were kidding me when you asked. I don't know, of course.
No, I, I'm, I'm curious, you know, at the last meeting, we, we cut all that money out in order to fund the schools. Was there any feedback, I know that you said a little bit about the stipends, okay? We did that that night with no free warning to anybody, no, did anybody get any feedback? Is the?
Yeah.
They liked it, they didn't like it, they were mad at?
I didn't hear a word.
Didn't?
Oh, I heard a lot of words.
You?
Yeah, while I was at candidate forum, so yes, yeah. I heard a few words, not, not a lot.
Like positive words or negative words?
Not, they weren't, none of them were negative, like angry, but, but there were, I, I take them as, I'm taking the three people I listened to, they were positive, though. They were like, you know what, I get my five hundred dollar stipend, if I go down to the ballpark and I buy batteries, I don't turn it into the town, I use it out of the stipend. And most, most people probably use that stipend for town funding things anyway. It was more, it was more, yeah, there's nothing negative out of it. It wasn't like they were gonna burn us to the stake or anything, it was more, personally, I think stipends were important. I, I think it, I think it brings the talent, it, it contains a talent bank that we already have in place, so if we're gonna, we're gonna find out what happens with, with the House Ways and, House Ways and Means Committee on their vote, and maybe, maybe we bring that up for another vote, but.
Like, cause part of, part of my, my thought process was, all right, so we now have a budget that doesn't include stipends, right? It's part of the one, we're gonna approve it, all right, as it is, and then tomorrow morning, we wake up and we find out Dudley didn't pass.
Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna keep the budget then as is, or are we gonna go back and visit? I know you had a couple of suggestions, okay, on what we do, but, you know, do we want to revisit things like the stipend, or do we want to revisit things like the part-timer for the planning commission, okay? There was some other things that maybe we could put back? I don't know, that's why I want to have a little, I don't know when the proper time to have a discussion is.
Yeah, we, my take on that is we, is we clawed tooth and nail to get to that one point nine million dollars, we're all at that meeting, right?
Right.
With the school committee. If, if, if the Dudley override fails, we're all gonna be back here in an emergency meeting, I would suspect, and try to figure out what we're gonna do from, from that point moving forward, but.
Mr. Chairman. I was just gonna say, if it's something as simple as, as what you're referring to, we could always just amend the budget from the floor at town meeting to put the stipends back in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Simple process.
No, I, you know, and I use stipends as the example tape, okay, but I mean, there may be some other things, we, Andrew, you went through that list and probably cut eighteen different items, okay? And we, we did it so that we could get to the school budget that night with very little discussion, all right? The budget that we had presented at one point seven, we thought was a pretty good budget, okay, and included a lot of what we saw as the priorities of town, okay? Granted, we have to give up a lot of those priorities to get to that school budget, but if we don't have to do it, are we just going to say, no, we'll just leave it, we'll drop it, and not go back and, and look at those priorities?
Is my, well, my, my question then for Andrew, to, to Hank's point, if that did happen and there were eighteen items we wanted to put back in, could we add that to the fall warrant to refund certain things?
And I really think that's a probably a good approach at this point, considering how much we've kind of put in and tweaked the numbers, and we, necessarily a failed vote tonight in Dudley may not be the end of the story.
Exactly.
So if they bring back a revised budget, we want to make sure that we're able to cover that, not having a reactionary town meeting to whatever number comes back.
I just am not comfortable with changing the, the budget at that town meeting.
I agree.
Okay? Because you know what can happen, and I've seen it happen.
It's messy, yeah.
So if we could accomplish something before then, depending on what direction, I'd rather see us do it before we get to that floor.
So, Mr. Chairman. So Hank, my, my recommendation to our board and yours as well is that we keep literally everything as is, because there's a lot of time, again, let's just, we'll just play this out for a second. If it, if the Dudley override passes tonight, then every, then our budget is for all intents and purposes relatively set, and we're good to go. If it fails, they still have a lot of options between now and June thirtieth to reassess their position and take other avenues if they so decide again. I, I don't want to interfere in like Dudley politics, but until that, but until June thirtieth hits, they, they can do an awful lot. So I'd rather keep us erring on the side of caution, be conservative, keeping the one point nine in, and with the worst-case scenario, October town meeting, we can move other monies around. So we're basically looking at from, you know, again, June to October, from maybe not having exactly what we wanted, but we at least know that we've gone into the new fiscal year on, on, on a safe step, if that makes sense.
If you run with the impression I was suggesting.
Oh, no, no, no. No, I get it, yeah.
Budget tonight, no, I was not.
Yeah.
I'm not advocating that.
I wouldn't touch anything until, until post-June thirtieth, to be honest with you.
And then we can address it at the fall town meeting.
Even, the school committee even said at our last meeting that, that their plan B was to bring another, if the Dudley override fails, they were gonna go back at it again with a lower number, adjusted number, and try it again, another override in Dudley, but they had to do that by June first.
I'm just wanting to know what our steps are going to be.
Timing is.
So we're all in the same.
Mine is, we don't do anything until, until after June thirtieth.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
That works?
That's fine, yeah. Because the money, if our budget goes down from there, we just leave it like we did this year, because we voted a higher budget.
Yeah, exactly.
And then, and then by fall, our, our crystal ball of our town growth?
Yeah, you'll have all unanswered.
Yeah, we will have, yeah, it's a little, it's, we're not, it's more formidable numbers, not, not something we're just guessing on.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Plus, you grow certified, free cash at the end, so.
All right, Steve, you still have a motion on the floor.
Oh, for Article?
Article eight.
Article eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair says aye.
All right, I'll entertain a motion that the Finance Committee support Article eight as presented in the warrant.
So moved.
A motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Hank, just real quick, the spelling of Shepherd in the motion forth from, yeah.
Yes, it's spelled wrong.
Four lines from the bottom on the left.
Oh, dear.
But it's spilt right on the previous page, so it's just.
Yeah, yeah.
That the only discussion?
Yeah.
All right, there being no other discussion, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All say no, and it's unanimous.
So again, if it pleases the board, I'm looking at Articles nine through twelve in their entirety. Again, it's standard water sewer enterprise funds, stabilization we're postponing, and, you know, perpetual use for, for the cemetery, so if the board pleases, I'll make an article to endorse Articles nine through twelve in toto. Or I can break them up.
I second the motion.
Oh, that sounds, we have a motion and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Um, any discussion, are we good or not?
No.
We're good on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Unanimous.
Okay, entertain them, I'll entertain a motion that the Finance Committee support Articles nine through twelve as presented.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All say no. To the vote.
Article thirteen, revolving funds, Ashley, anything changed on this from last year?
Yeah, we got rid of the Daniels.
You did. Thank you, that makes me happy. Outstanding, man. All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I have no issue with the, again, these are, these are standard revolving funds, motion to, motion to approve, or again, motion to support the motion.
So Article thirteen.
Yes, sir.
Motion second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, chair says aye.
I was gonna discuss something, but you went by me. I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion, we approve Article thirteen as presented in the warrant.
So moved.
A motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion? So I have a little bit, I'll bring up my discussion and my, my motion. The Finance Committee made a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that you review the, in, the, which one is it? The building inspectors?
Fees.
Fees. Has that been put on your agenda? All right, and I will say again, the Finance Committee would like to recommend that the Board of Selectmen review the fees charged at the, in the building commission. They're too low.
I'll, I'll note that.
Would you?
We got a request from Kurt, yes, to be on the next one, because he's on vacation this week, so.
All right, any other discussion on Article thirteen?
And, and on that, I think, I think we, we lowered it during COVID, but we lowered a lot of town fees just to get up.
And raise them.
Keep a little bit of.
Get them back up.
No, no, yeah, no, I, I.
You've been advised.
Andrew, as part of that, can you find out how much we make per year in those fees?
Yep, no problem.
I'd like to know before and after the reduction.
Yeah, the, the primary fee that I believe that the building commissioner asked to review was actually the residential solar, essentially that the changes that have occurred since the original fee was constructed don't cover the burden of the, the cost of review, so that was particularly one that he looked at, but I believe Finance wanted to look at overall. I can get those numbers together, but.
If you could, thank you.
Yeah.
I know a lot of the fees were just minor things like deck permit fees.
Yeah, those were the ones that you brought down.
Yeah.
Actually, I think I have a spreadsheet I sent in, I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, there being any more discussion, all those in favor of supporting Article thirteen, say yes.
Yes.
All say no.
Article fourteen, municipal charges leaned by law were pretty much, I found that, or?
I'm fine with it, I hate the motions, but it's just gonna take us a while, but, yeah.
We tried so hard.
I know, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing it out there.
We had a lot of discussion, back and forth, legal counsel.
When he, when he says a lot, he means Allah.
Yeah, to try to find any way possible that that be, and this was our compromise, was to essentially restructure the bylaw, so that way to make the motions as simplistic as possible.
Yeah, his motions were like two pages, so.
Yeah.
His little blurb is a lot better.
We can't just say section three, paragraph A through H?
So because in the, in the section of law, it says that each fee shall be established by a separate vote, so you have to take a vote on each.
We need to change that.
For those, for those at home, when you review Article fourteen, you'll know exactly what we're talking about, because there are, because we will literally have to do nine different motions at town meeting to make this work. However, all that being said, I have no problem with the, with, with the article, so I will make a motion to support it in its entirety.
Do I have a second on that?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, chair says aye. Unanimous.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, we support Article fourteen as presented in the warrant.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All say no. Those say no, unanimous.
Article 15, rescinding license permitting for, for like fingerprinting, I, I agree with the chief, uh, on this one, I ma, make a motion to support.
Do I have a second on that, yeah? Any discussion on this? And for anybody at home, this is just a, it's a process the chief of police has to go through for people soliciting in town, different, different, a bunch of different things. But fingerprinting and that type of stuff would be... We have a motion in a second, no discussion, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cheers as I.
Oh, I'm sorry, Hank, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, we're...
Yeah, I, I didn't see that.
Yeah, I put an AM there, folks, I assumed, but I was just...
No, that's my fault. Alright, next up's Article 16, this is around the general bylaws regarding peddling and soliciting. Again, a lot is staying the same, a lot, some is just being removed to try to make life a little easier for, for the chief. Motion to approve. And by the way, uh, sorry, Steve, these, these will all be posted online, uh, so that everyone can read them in, in their entirety, so... Anyway, uh, motion to approve.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Cheers as I.
Alright, 17, alright, I think after this, 17 zoning, I don't wanna touch, personally, I'm, I have no interest in touching that one. 18, I don't have any interest. 19, I don't have any interest. And that's it? Hank, I don't know if you guys care about zoning. So for all intents and purposes, for those at home, through you, Steve, um, both the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen support the, the warrant as a whole, uh, exactly as printed. I mean, obviously, if there were discussions on town meeting floor, people have independent views, but the, but the way it's printed, we've all worked together to, to put it together, and we're all comfortable with it. So you guys can take off if you want.
Yeah, I'll entertain the motion, everybody get a copy of the minutes from four, five, 23, they were in the Dropbox, everybody's got a chance to read them. Alright, they're being, I'll entertain a motion, we accept the minutes of four, 25, 23, or 23?
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second? Any discussion? They're being done, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those say no, it is unanimous. I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Second, any discussion? Anybody wanna stick around and listen to these guys?
I don't have Andrew's reviews on me, that's the next question, I'm way off.
They're just, they're just being notified.
Feel free to submit all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those say no, it is unanimous. Thank you guys for inviting us.
No, no, you're...
I'll try to post the Dudley, uh, results on, on my page if you guys are bored later.
Yeah, if anybody gets them sooner.
Thanks, everybody.
That's, that's kind of a, that, that's, that's a big one.
What Dudley's doing.
Just hand it to Jack one.
Perfect. Thank you.
Say, buddy.
Feel free to make this last as long as you want.
I'm coming to me next to ask a lot of questions.
And we are moving on to... Town administrator review.
Yeah, so this is really just a reminder, um, kind of has, should have gone on the last meeting, just as the initiation process. But as the Board of Selectmen's policies, the board is set to perform an evaluation of the town administrator's performance, uh, for the period of Jul, July 1st to June 30th. But as the board has traditionally performed the evaluation at the last meeting prior to the election to cover the period from May 1st to April 30th. Uh, I've emailed the rubric to the, uh, board, if you could get those in prior to Thursday before the election, so that way we can at least cover it for the next meeting, it'd be appreciated.
Okay, and that's the only action we have?
No action for tonight.
Okay.
And then policy review, uh, make this really easy, there's five of them on there, complete streets, dead animal pickup, declaring civil emergency, designer selection, and our direct deposit. No changes to any of them, so...
So just a quick thing on that, through you, Mr. Chair. Andrew, can we just, just make sure that we're consistent on the dead animal pickup thing? Because I know, I, like, I read online a lot of, I called the ACO, he or she said no, I don't know who, whom to call, et cetera. Just so everyone knows, according to our policy, it's supposed to go through the ACO, so we can, we, we will just make sure everyone understands that. But that being said, it, it being no changes, uh, motion to accept them without changes?
Yeah, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Cheers as I, unanimous. Now moving on to my favorite part.
Adjournment? No, oh, no, no.
Alright. Student representative report, April 25th, 2023. Students who attended the 2023 Global Awareness Trip to Spain, Portugal, and Gibraltar returned from Europe yesterday. It was an amazing opportunity and an incredible experience. Signups for the 2024 Global Awareness Trip to Switzerland and Italy are available right now. See Mrs. Perangeli at any point for additional information. AP exams at Shepherd Hill will begin taking place next week and continue through Friday, May 12th. The best of luck to all who will be taking them. The student council will be hosting a spring fling dance on Saturday, May 6th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. in the Shepherd Hill Cafeteria. Tickets are $10 and will be in, on sale at all lunches from April 24th to April 28th. Any questions should be directed to Ms. Doobie. The Shepherd Hill Drama Club will be performing just another high school play this Friday and Saturday at 7:00 p.m. Tickets can be purchased online or by scanning the QR code on the posters all around the school. And the Shepherd Hill softball team beat Bay Path in a game over Vacation with a score of 5 to 2. We congratulate them on one of many victories this season.
Very good, Harry, thank you. Now we are on to the town administrators' report. And Andrew, you're following a pretty tough, tough story.
I'll try to keep, I'll try to keep it concise. Um, so, uh, the website development continues as we're working with Civic Plus. Uh, right now, we're reviewing a number of different layout options and color palettes, and just want to send a reminder out to anybody who has any good, high-resolution photos from around town. We'd love to include them in the design, so reach out to me if you have any that you think would be great to use. Uh, update on the Blood Road culvert, uh, that was brought to your attention from Mr. Lomansky at your last meeting. Uh, I did send an email update to the board, but essentially, um, working through some discrepancies between what he would deem to be a desired outcome and what may be achievable. Uh, but I'll keep working with, uh, DPW Director Foskett on this issue. Buffon Road tree update, this is another one that was brought up at the last meeting. Included in here, I have the, uh, op, opinion from legal counsel as far as the town's potential liability, if it were to be declared a town tree. I did have a follow-up with, uh, discussion with Jerry today over kind of how the determination was made that it was not. I do have some documentation here that shows that what the, the road width, um, of what is there is actually paved two feet wider than, um, what is out, what is outlined as the, um, road width. So it's thought that the pin that outlines at the front of his house may actually be under the roadway, which is why he wasn't able to find it. So that may bring a resolution to that issue.
Thank you for doing that.
Want to thank Mary, she's been working very diligently on a selectman recognition project. She's actually identified all former members of the Board of Selectmen back to the Towns Incorporated back in 1755. There's been 254 selectmen that have served the Town of Charlton since then, and...
Your first term. Oh, I'm back.
If, if you take David out of that number, the, 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 the whole percentage is...
So we're actually working on a, um, a plaque with Bay Path, uh, basically kind of recognizing each, each, uh, century of select people.
No, that's cool, really.
To hang in the hallway, so... And then also just want to thank, uh, Highway for their, um, help in cleaning out some of the junk over the base, uh, through the basement, so we have that whole hallway where Chippin is cleared out now. And trying to work on, uh, some renovations to that space. I know we're gonna be doing some, we're moving our record scanning project, um, into that area right now, so... One project at a time, so...
Other business unknown at time of posting?
Yep, and just, this came in this morning, or late yesterday, and into this morning, so... Uh, Amazon have reached out, or I should say, Blue Water Property Group have reached out to us, basically noting that they needed approval from the town, um, to sign a, execute an agreement with Mass DOT for the traffic signal, um, upgrades that were required from 31 all the way out to Hobbs Brook. They're also gonna need approval from, um, Stirbridge to sign the agreement. I was just looking for action from the board to authorize me to sign this agreement.
So moved, just purely administrative at this point?
Yeah, second.
Yeah.
Um, how do, for, so we have a motion in a second, how do, how do we think, um, do we have any opposition to Stirbridge?
We'll see what happens with Stirbridge, uh, this is basically Mass DOT's pro forma agreement, and it more or less gives the town authorization to have access to the data collected through the Traffic Signalization Program and make recommended changes. So it actually gives the town license to ask, ask that and doesn't really, you know, ask for their approval to put it in, so...
And, and prior to this, Stirbridge has already gone along, they've done the story, they've already, and, or they've gotten their...
I reached out to their town administrator today, I'm still waiting for a response back, but, you know, Amazon did note that this was something that they were trying to expedite. So I'm hoping to kind of help move this along.
No, but absolutely, expedite, I'd like to work on that. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cheers as I, unanimous.
Jim, the only other thing under other business, just for a future topic, I know that August is coming up pretty quick, and Superintendent Foskett is, still has, has, has retirement planned. So when our board gets back together, uh, post-election, we should probably start talking through that to see what our plans are, how we wanna handle, et cetera. So basically, it's a nice way of me saying, or a long-winded way of me saying, uh, we should probably throw that on the agenda sometime May.
We're, unless there's any objection to the board, I believe within the next few weeks, we're planning on posting for the position, so I don't know if you wanna take any action prior to posting, or if you want us to hold off on the posting until you guys make a decision.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll put that on the agenda to approve the post before we go in, okay?
Cause I wanna think around, you know, search criteria, what we're doing, et cetera, so, at least that's just me.
Yep.
Cool.
Next meeting, we'll, we can add a, um, an update on the, the senior center, um, community center, unless you wanna, kind of...
Go ahead, be great.
So we just, so on Monday, we, um, had four presentations from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on the, the four potential, um... Vendors that we would hire to come and kind of, uh, bring ideas to how we could in the cost of a potential mixed community center, senior center, chip in one location. And actually, it was pretty interesting. Um, it was a long day, very long, um, but we'll have more. If there's no decision made, we wanna go and, uh, and tour some of these places that they've, um, built before, we decide, but... We can, we have all their packets, if anybody's interested to, you know, look what we're, you know, the potential applicants.
Cool, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, alright, and, um... Next meeting announcement. Board of Selectmen regular meeting, May 9th, 2023, I would accept a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And, um, it's 7:11.
Oh, actually, you know what? I'm gonna hold that for one second. We have more than our usual number of audience participants tonight, anybody wanna have anything? You guys, everybody good? Everybody good? Damn it, alright, yeah, motion stands.
Alright. And we're nine minutes ahead of Bill's schedule, so...
Told you guys.
Life is good. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, we, we, we stopped voting.
We have to vote to adjourn. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Here we go.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Drew.